We will go ahead and call the meeting to order and begin with a roll call.
Mayor Protem Castellano.
Yeah.
Councilmember Malton, councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloach.
Here.
And Mayor Bergel is absent tonight.
Great, and wishing our best for Mayor Bergel. We have only one item on the agenda tonight, and that is the Sunset Heights update. Public comment will occur within that item, not preceding it. And I'm going to turn it over to staff to get us started.
It is Assistant Planner Melissa Smith.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, hello, councilmembers. Assistant Planner Smith here today, and we are here to discuss the Sunset Heights multifamily housing development. The Sunset Heights property is a 4.13 acre site. That is for contiguous parcels located on the bluff overlooking Broadway or Highway 101 between West Henderson Street and West Harris Street. And the site is identified in the city's certified housing element as needing to provide a minimum of 80 deed-restricted affordable dwelling units, 20 dedicated to low-income households, and 60 dedicated to very low-income households. A memorandum of understanding was signed with the Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, or RCHDC, in September of 2023. Since the MOU went into effect, staff has conducted an online survey with 298 respondents, a summary of which was included as an attachment to your agenda summary. The first of three required public meetings was held on November 15th with 35 people attending either in person or via Zoom. Now, we are here before council to present preliminary design concepts for feedback. It's anticipated the design will be finalized over the summer, and planning permits for the project would be applied for and processed in the fall. Between now and when construction begins, funding will be secured by the developer, and it's anticipated construction would begin in 2028. I'm now going to turn it over to Beth from RCHDC, so she can tell you a bit about her organization and project funding, and then the project's architect will discuss design concepts.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Matsumoto, and I'm the Director of Multifamily Development for Rural Communities Housing. We're a nonprofit housing developer and property manager. Our main office is located in Ukiah, but I'm based here locally. I'd like to echo a few of the written comments you've received commending the city's actions to advance new housing in the community, especially for folks who are earning low wages. We're here to talk about our proposed conceptual designs. And before I introduce our architect, I'd like to talk briefly about what we're seeing in the financial arena for affordable housing. So, tax credit funding is the largest source of affordable housing. And a couple of years ago, to win a tax credit reservation, we needed local and state funding of about 30% of total development cost. Today, when we compete among other rural projects, we are needing closer to 50% of the total development cost in local and state funding to be able to win a tax credit reservation. This means that to get projects, you've paved the pathway to get them built, local allocations of funding such as the permanent local housing allocation, or PLHA, and housing trust funds are even more critical than ever to achieve the city's new housing production goal. So, something to think about as priorities are set for these local housing allocations. Back to our conceptual designs, I'd like to introduce our architect, Robert Hayes, the principal in charge at Robert W. Hayes &amp; Associates, who's going to go over our site plans.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and public here. Thanks so much for giving us the time today to go through the project. We're really happy and excited to be doing something here in Eureka. My kids live here, so it's a great area, and we're really happy to be up here. I started the firm in 1999. 80% of our work is affordable housing. We work from Wyrica down through Marin County. These are just a few projects that we've completed. We work very hard at crafting our buildings and making them look as good as they can possibly look and fit in with the environment, the surroundings, the neighborhoods. We work real hard at trying to achieve those goals. But that just gives you a little flavor of some of the projects we've done. I'm not going to augur into that specifically. We're here to talk about the project at hand, Sunset Heights, Ariel View, Broadway, Harris, Henderson. It's a challenging site. It's got some constraints. It has some opportunities. This diagram goes through simply, sort of in a simple way, what the constraints and the opportunities are. It's a fairly large piece of land, about four acres, like Melissa said, but the developable area is not that large. There's a slope setback, excuse my hand, it's a little jittery these days, that really starts where we can build on the property. The green area is where we can build on the property. So, you can see, that's a constraint. It's not that large of an area. The area of development is about 1.9 acres, not four acres, as the overall property is. So, that's what we have to deal with. It's a long, skinny piece of land, too. That's another, what I would call, constraint. You know, it's nice to have a big piece of land. You know, you can kind of spread out. This is long and skinny. So, those are the two constraints. The opportunities, though, the topography is really interesting. The red lines that you see are five-foot contours. So, from this, from Harris, to this area here along Henderson, it goes from 65 feet down to 50 feet. The houses here are, and I'm talking about elevation-wise. The elevation of these properties is about 65 feet here, down to 60 feet here. So, we're 10 feet lower right here than any of these surrounding houses. That's a really important point, and you'll see it as we go forward. So, that, to me, is a great opportunity for this property. The other great opportunity is obviously Humboldt Bay. I mean, it's really a fabulous site. So, really, those are the constraints and the opportunities, simply put. Let's see if I can do this here. Now, this is going to be subtle, but you'll see it as we move forward in the schemes. The first scheme, I'm using unit plans that are skinny and long. The second scheme, I'm using unit plans that are wider. And it makes a huge difference, well, I think it makes a huge difference, in the schemes as they unfold. And I'll explain, you'll see that. But that's sort of how I'm achieving the things I am achieving, which I'm going to explain now. So, Scheme 1. Again, the topography. So, this area here, finished floor at 50. So, let me back up a minute. I want to say something. So, what our goal here is, is to minimize, and this is something that we always try to do, we always do this. I don't know if we always achieve it, but we always try to do this. We try to minimize our impact to the neighborhood and maximize our affordable units. That's a goal of this project and all the projects that we really work on. So, how do we achieve minimizing the impact to the neighborhood? Well, the topography is doing a big thing for us. This north building is really a basement relative to the units, the houses along the neighboring houses. So, it's at 50 feet. These houses are at 60 and 65 feet. So, this thing's a story down. So, that's one thing. Topography is helping us out a lot here. Scheme 1 also is using these long, skinny units. So, we work, the unit fits, we can fit more units on this long, skinny piece of developable land. You know, basically by stacking them, we can stack more units on the whole length by making them skinny. What does that achieve for us? It gives us quite a nice thing on this north building block, an open plaza to Humboldt Bay. And as we go up, so that's the basement level. This is the first floor level. Now, this floor level, both, all of these buildings, let's just say for simplicity's sake, they're all at 60 feet. Again, these houses here are at 60 to 65 feet, first floor, okay? So, the building blocks, we're building up on the north end and on the south end. This is the second thing that we're doing to minimize the impact to the neighborhood. We're building higher here and higher here and two stories here. So, these go from four stories here, basement 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. And then these building blocks are basement 1 or 1, 2, if that makes sense. I know, it's in my head, it's easy for me to understand, but basically, these are two-story buildings, and these are three- and four-story buildings relative to the neighborhood. So, as it goes up, that's the first floor. Second floor, again, it's basement 1, 2. This is the second floor. You can see that there's no building here after the first floor. So, you know, this elevation is now at 50, 60. So, this second floor is at, well, it's 10 feet up to the surrounding neighborhood, but it's also open right here. And then, and this building is the last, is the second floor. That's the last floor of that little building. And as it goes up, now we have no building at the third floor in this center section. So, it's really putting the units on the north and putting the units on the south where they have the least impact to the neighborhood. We all need affordable housing. We have to do something to achieve that. I think what we're doing here is, it's a sensitive arrangement of units relative to the neighborhood. So, that's how we're, so Scheme 1 achieves, in the north area, we've got 43 units and approximately 50 feet high, 45 to 50 feet high. But again, that lower level is a basement level. And then on the south building block area, we have 44 units and approximately 40-foot-high buildings. So, we have a total unit count on Scheme 1 of 87 units. And buildings that vary in height between 40 and 50 feet. But again, that 50-foot building set down in, really, it's like everything's three stories from the neighborhood here. So, that's Scheme 1. But what I really like about this scheme is the fact that we have these wonderful plazas, this wonderful aperture from the parking lot out to Humboldt Bay. For the site itself, these are going to be fabulous spaces, I think. But anyway, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, so Scheme 2. These schemes are very much the same. But again, that unit design affects a few things that I think are pretty important from Scheme 1 to Scheme 2. So, now, these units are wider this way. So, again, we're at this, all these elevations, all these finished floors are the same. But what happens here is you don't have this through plaza aperture anymore. And as it goes up, this level does not have the through plaza aperture. This one does not have it. I mean, you have some open space here, but you really have, because of how wide these units are, less space between the north building block and the south building block in Scheme 2. Couple more units in Scheme 2. The north building block has 46 units. The south has 44, so we have a total of 90 units versus 87 in Scheme 1. But we don't have the through view, and we have less space between the larger building blocks. So, that's basically the two schemes, subtle differences, but I think once they're built, they're going to be potentially pretty big differences. And I'm going to really just sort of stop at that point, at this point, and I think I've summarized it pretty well, too, as far as what the differences are. And just, I'll be quiet and open it up to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes and Ms. Matsumoto, for being here and for your work on this project. We'll go ahead and open it up to other councilmembers for questions. Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Hey, Robert, can you come back up? I have a, thank you.
Okay.
It's an exciting project, and I think it's very thoughtful, you know? Taking consideration of the neighbors, and it's exciting. I did have a question about the acreage, right? 1.9 acres. Are there any, are there environmental constraints, geologic constraints that we couldn't expand out? You know, I'm just thinking, I'm not saying we're big fans of engineered fill and all that, but is that a problem?
Well, let's go back to, I didn't really explain very well the setback, the slope setback. It's really, if we can look at the drawings for a second, that's the huge driver. That, because of where the site falls off, you know, the soils engineer has dictated a 30-foot setback from that drop-off to where we can start building on the site. I should have explained that better. I apologize for that, but.
No, that's fine. I figured it was something. I didn't know if that was something that could be engineered, you know? Is it just too costly?
Well, so, we've taken that as a dictate.
Okay.
Is there a solution that could build, you could build within this area here? This is, you know, this is a topo line that creates this setback. It's basically where the bluff falls off, you know, setback from there. They've engineered it, and honestly, I wouldn't really want to, I wouldn't feel comfortable trying not to adhere to their constraints, you know? I mean, structural engineers can do a lot of things, but soils engineers, you know, they kind of write the Bible, so.
Okay.
Enough said, I think. I don't really want to build outside that line myself.
No, I appreciate.
For engineering reasons, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
You can just see it in my eyes that I had a question. Thank you. Yeah. I was curious, and thank you, Councilmember Bauer, for asking that. I'm curious, with the undeveloped portion, there's not any plans for that, really, if I understand correctly?
Well, yes and no. I mean, there are things that we haven't really put into this plan, a lot of things we haven't put into this plan. You know, we have been talking about doing something in this area, some, I don't want to commit to anything at this point, but some space that could be for people, let's put it that way. You know, definitely some access down to Broadway, pedestrian access down to Broadway.
See, now, you're reading my eyes as well, because that's kind of the idea. It's like, what is the traffic flow going to look like there if we have almost 90, 100 units? You know, Broadway is one of our most traversed, being part of 101, but it's also our most accident-prone. So, are there going to be any mitigation efforts? And again, what's the access going to look like there for residents going in and out, or even pedestrians for that matter?
Yeah, so, let's talk about cars for a minute. I know we don't like cars, but I think the reality is we have them. We're really talking about a one-way vehicular route, you know? That's what we're going to promote here. So, you enter the Scheme 1 here. You go in, park, and you go out on Henderson. We haven't really identified which would be the best pedestrian route. I mean, I'm thinking this is the one, because we're going to do something with this part of the property here, but we really have to look at that. That's sort of the next level of sort of development, those type of things that we're going to look at. Scheme 2 is basically the same. It's enter the site here, exit the site here. And we'll design these entrances and exits, you know, all per Public Works standards for, you know, vehicular viewing and stuff like that. So, they'll be engineered properly.
So, just to add to that, the previous development, when Pearson had proposed on this, that location that's on Henderson and Broadway, there used to be city-owned. It was a city-owned right-of-way. And that was something that we abandoned to give to him and his intent of that. And I'm sure this property will likely use it. It can still be used for public space. But stormwater retention and runoff, that's an ideal location for that, and that's the reason why we abandoned. Now, we own it now again, of course, but not only for public access would that be good, but it likely will be needed for some stormwater treatment.
Yeah, thanks for pointing at that. Again, all slopes that way, so it is ideal for stormwater retention. That's going to be the place for it.
And, I'm just trying to figure out how to formulate it, sorry. I know you had said that you can't, or that you're not willing to commit to at least one perspective of what can be done with the undeveloped land, and I can understand that as things are still being worked out, but I just want to put it out there. Pedestrian bridge might be nice going over across Broadway, so. Go ahead.
Councilmember Malton.
I actually just want the Rena split in my notes. What was the low-income versus very-low-income required split for this property?
20/60. 20 is low, and 60 is very low, right there.
Thank you. Yeah, that's correct.
Councilwoman Contreras Deloach.
I'm just curious why it takes three years to get funding in place. I think I'm just so unfamiliar in some ways with this process, and it's just a little disheartening that it's going to be 2028.
So, I'll do my best to attest to that, and then Beth will probably come up and tell me I'm an idiot. But it's similar. I think that's just to make sure that there's not an expectation that it happens right away. I know that the next round of tax credits are coming up in June, and there are going to be even competition here locally amongst different projects between Link, as well as potentially the Earth Center. So, the competitive part of it, to refer back to Danco, we had to do, I believe, three extensions for that project, and it seemed like a long time, but that was three years for them to get those tax credits. Now, we'll do the same that we did with Link, and as Beth had mentioned, our intent would be to look for state money. So, whether it's, you know, affordable housing, sustainable communities money, which is out there, and assisting them with the public processes associated with that. I mean, that's how Link got the 50 million. I think that that's the biggest thing. The sooner that we can get that 50% local and state funding will help a lot with our competitiveness for tax credits. And then also, depending on, you know, that year, and I don't know what it is for this year, but sometimes they, you know, make senior housing more competitive, or they make multifamily housing more competitive. And so, I think that's how they'll determine the layout and, you know, what the units look like and those type of things. All those things factor in. But I would assume that three years is pretty conservative, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen before then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Is Redwood Coast Regional Center still involved with this project?
Yes, so, Redwood Coast Regional Center is interested in contributing 25% or a million dollars towards this project.
Great, thank you. Do I have any questions? You know, I maybe have questions for Planner Smith. You know, some of the things, and we'll get back to comments and things after public comment, that were mentioned in the, and also firstly, thank you for the excellent work you did around the public survey and everything. There was some really great information there. It seems like a lot of folks' concerns, you know, are being met through these, either both of these designs. I was curious just about, I know we're not getting much into like traffic mitigation and things like that in this meeting. It seems like the one-way design will help with that. Are there any other efforts that have been made in these plans to kind of address the, especially the neighborhood concerns in particular?
What I saw through the survey results as primary concerns of respondents, one was traffic and safety, two was slope stability, three, neighborhood safety, and then four, the view sheds. People want to be able to see out to Humboldt Bay. So, I feel like even these preliminary design concepts are addressing at least three of the four of those. And at this early stage, I think that's pretty good.
Thank you. And will there be laundry facilities on site? I know that was something folks were really excited about. Okay, great. And with any other further questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and open, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Protem. I heard you mention something about Redwood Regional Center, and so I was wondering if I could hear a little more about that relationship and what's going on there.
Sure, so, we've partnered with Redwood Coast Regional Center on a few projects now, and they support folks who are developmentally disabled. And so, we would set aside a certain amount of units for their target population.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
And they came to one of the early meetings for this project and spoke in favor of it as well. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any members of the public wish to make comment on the item? Who are here in council chambers? Okay, anyone on Zoom wishing to make public comment?
I see none.
Okay. We'll close public comment and bring it, hopefully that means that everyone felt like their needs were met in that excellent survey that they participated in. We'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Bauer.
No, I mean, this is what we're wanting to do, right? This is a great project, and I think we all wish things would go faster, knowing we need housing, and there's just that, it is a priority of the state. housing and there's just that, it is a priority of the state and we hope the state takes into account that we're, as a community, we're really pushing hard and we're producing great projects. You've done great work. I mean, I don't, nobody comments, it's unusual, right? Especially when you're talking about, what, nine, eighty-seven units or something? So I hope we can help speed this project along and, and, and get people housed and, what a beautiful spot for housing. I can't even believe it's not housed as yet, you know? So I'm excited to see this thing happen and hopefully we can help in any way possible to make it successful.
And I think they want input on scheme one or two, if you have that some.
Well, yeah, I was going to actually, thank you, I totally forgot. I mean, obviously, I think scheme one, my personal view, having those view sheds, you know, I mean, that's like, feel like we're in the coastal zone. I mean, that's a, a requirement of coastal projects, right? And having those opportunities to still see the bay and it's really, I think, a brilliant design to have those plazas. They're great space for, for the residents and, and then for the neighbors to still have that amenity of a view shed, a really nice one. So that's my vote, is to see that project, see scheme one happen.
Councilmember Maltin.
Hi, thank you. And thank you all for all this lovely work. I agree, scheme one, I think with the view sheds is very important, sacrificing three units to make it a more aesthetically pleasing situation altogether, especially for the neighbors. I know that's what a lot of folks were really worried about, was having a big wall of shadows over their house, basically. So to still be able to get to see the sunset from different spots up there would be really valuable. I also like the idea of pedestrian access. There's a lot, maybe not a bridge, because I'm not sure where the other side of that would actually go. Right, but what's, what's on the other side of Broadway? Sorry. But there's a lot of pedestrian traffic through there. So a lot, a lot of folks going up both Henderson and Harris right up there. So that, it's a good opportunity to have folks go up a little bit of something interesting and green, maybe while they're moving. So yeah, scheme one gets my vote as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
I know I have a lot of words tonight, but yeah, same thing. I, I favor it and for those same reasons that have already been mentioned.
I'm favorable to either, and it sounds like, you know, I should be complicit in this too, so. That's the word I'll use. I, I guess I would favor scheme two. Both seem viable to me, but if it's an issue of the neighbors in the neighborhood for a larger view shed, then yeah, scheme two seems favorable. Or scheme one, sorry.
Thanks, yeah.
It says scheme two up there, I'm thinking scheme one, my bad.
Yeah, that's someone's out the big plazas. There we go, scheme one. I also, someone, do you want to add? Okay.
Actually, no, it was a question, because when you said there would be one-way vehicle access, I pictured it going the other way. So would the people who are then exiting onto Henderson have to go down Henderson to Broadway? That is the only way to exit the apartment complex?
Yes, based on the, we changed that to a one-way street about three or four years ago.
Good decision.
Redoing that would be highly unlikely.
Sure, but if the entrance was there, you, you wouldn't have to switch the, that's a, sounds good. I was just clarifying that the only way out would be down in a car. Okay.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, I would say that was probably maybe the only thing that I had a little bit of concern about was just that is a rather large loop that anyone's going to need to take to go, you know, if they're coming from this side of town or, you know, whatever they're, you know, down onto Broadway, up and around or whatever, well, are there's, is there road access across there? There's a road, what is it?
Where? It's an alley?
It's an alley? Okay, yeah, I, I think that's maybe the only concern that I have is just that this very large loop, you know, four-block loop that, you know, requires people to go down onto Broadway and come back up. And it's, if I remember right, too, you have to really go down Broadway a piece, down to the mall, and then loop back up to come up that hill. Anyway, I, I think that's maybe the only.
So just, you know, that would be the encouraged direction for traffic? That alley would be, I shouldn't say this, because Brian's probably going to shoot me, but if they really wanted to go the other way, they could use the alley.
And, and unpaved, like the rest of the alleys in Eureka? Yeah, that's problematic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and it looks like there's, sorry, go ahead.
There's been a discussion with Public Works that this project would be required to pave the length of that alleyway.
Do we know, how, I'm sorry, I, I can't load this, I'm offline now and I can't see well enough to see how wide that alley is. Does it say how wide that alley is going to be?
Um, yeah, it's going to be, it is a twenty-foot alley and we're being required to pave that alley twenty feet wide.
Okay, so that, that is going to be probably used then as a, a road for the apartment com, the apartments then?
Well, I mean, it could be used. I mean, you know, we can, we can talk more about ingress and egress at each of those locations on, the one on Henderson and, and the one on Harris. I think we want to promote one way through traffic, but, you know, you, you will only be able to go one way on Harrison, you will only be able to go one way on Henderson. But can you go in on Henderson? I think we can probably talk about those kind of things moving forward with Public Works, if I'm making sense. You know, if you're coming, if you're going essentially west on Harrison, can you turn into the project? It's wide enough now, the, you know, the, the drive aisle there to, to be able to go in there. But I think, I think we, we probably, that's more of an engineering thing and traffic thing that we can study as we go forward.
Yeah, so pending that, it, it seems to make sense to me that, I mean, obviously you couldn't go, but coming down Henderson and heading towards the west and making a left, and the only thing it would require is that you head down the alley and then get to the south side entrance to get into the parking lot.
Yeah, I think I just, you know, my thought is, is that, you know, people are going to travel the way that is easiest and quickest generally. And just if we build that assumption into it, then we should plan for it in an appropriate way instead of just, you know, kind of offhandedly.
Well, yeah, and as Robert said, the engineers and the traffic engineers need to look at turning radiuses and volumes and all of those things before we can make a definitive yes or no to that.
Okay.
And twenty-foot alley is huge. I wish I had one of those.
I also prefer option one. I really appreciate the outdoor plazas. I think those will be really useful amenities for the residents there. I, I love an outdoor plaza personally, you know, especially, just, yeah, just fun opportunities to barbecue or have shared public space. These are, these are a mix of kind of one to three-bedroom units throughout, if I remember correctly, sorry. Thank you.
They're a mix of single occupancy rooms to three bedrooms. We're not doing many SROs, we call those SROs. Mostly it's ones and twos.
Okay.
Is what it is. And it's a pretty, it's a good mix for the population that we're looking at, the ones and twos, the mix of the ones and twos.
Thank you.
And they're decent-sized units too, they're really decent, so.
Thank you. Let's see, I don't think you need, is there any other direction from council that you're looking for at this time?
No, today there is no action and we really just did want to know what scheme you guys prefer, and it sounded like everybody answered that question, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. This is very, oh, go ahead.
Which is, for the survey results, we took these from October through December of 2023, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because it says here we took them in the future of October through 2024, so I just, something that just caught me real quick, sorry.
Bad.
Assistant Planner Smith is that good?
Let's see, well, thank you, and go ahead, yes, please, no.
I just want to thank you very much for giving us some good direction on picking a scheme, because really that gives us a really good, strong direction forward with a, a scheme, and we can really develop it now to, to really make it something, something good. So thanks so much for the direction tonight.
Well, thank you, and thank you, we really appreciate your thoughtful, considered approach and the amount of kind of public input that has gone into this and the way that you're really listening to the public, so thank you. And probably you were already told this, Beth, but we do have a housing trust fund now, so we're excited to see, you know, how that will bring more opportunities to help implement this project development and other, others like it, so thank you. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn this meeting and return at six PM with our regularly scheduled meeting.